Not a lot to report, we're working on the working budget. I'm waiting to get some more information from some of the committee chairmen regarding their budgets for next year. So I'm looking to get all that together and my goal is to have a recommendation, an action item on the next meeting to go through and have something to approve there for a working budget. So as for the other item is the discussion, approve. I'm good, I got it. So discuss, approve, so citing the open meeting agreement or the training we took and everything, it says the purchase or lease of real estate for the use of a public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussing a particular parcel, what it can be acquired, citing that exception and recording that in the minute notes. I'd like to vote on having a closed session after this meeting to discuss purchase of some real estate.
Okay, and you can tell us that you're going to go into closed session, but then when we get ready, you can make the motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion then at that point, so, okay. But that's section five will be.
It's whether you want to go now or after the meeting.
I would say after the meeting, I'd like us to go through. But that's really all I have to report at this time.
Thank you, Alderman. Buildings and grounds, Ron is out.
And Gene? Ron gave me what needs to be covered here. First item, I would like to make a motion to approve hiring Todd Berger for summer mowing.
I'll second it.
Is this similar to what we've done in the past?
Yes, he's worked for us many years. And he's got the pay scales set.
Yeah, okay.
Ready? Hankins?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Car.
Yes.
Uh, the winter, the heavy ice this winter has moved a piling hole for the public boat docks that are down here on the riverfront. I would like to approve up to $2,000 to get that repaired. We may be able to get it done for free, somebody offered to look at it. It's time to get that done, the docks need to get it in place, so one way or another, we gotta do it. So I put that in form of a motion.
I'll second it.
Approve up to $2,000.
You would do that, do we pursue bids on that, or how does that work? Would we get like three bids or?
That's kinda like repair or maintenance type stuff.
So there's standard contracts?
Yes, we'll look around, yes.
I didn't know if we have a standard contract that we normally use for it, or?
No, we try to get the cheapest we can.
Right, so that's where the three bids.
We start locally and then expand.
And you're just looking for an approval up to 2,000?
Yeah.
With that, we have to have that bid cover the local guy that's got a drag line on a flat bar. Where they can come in, you can't line up on the shore or anywhere to pull it. But he has to have certain, he doesn't have to have a certain depth of water, he can do it on probably any depth of water. But he's gotta have one of the smaller tub companies pushing him up here and taking that. The other guy we're working with that may do it for free depends on how deep the water, because he's gotta have five foot draw on his tug. If he feels he can do it, he's gonna bring his pilot here and check it out, if those engines.
Okay.
Help us there, but we can't install those docks and get that by getting straightened out. So there aren't many out there to bid on, if you bid, someone from Georgia is gonna come, obviously it's gonna cost a lot more money there, get them here.
And obviously we could do it free, we love it free.
Oh yeah. So that's a motion.
Hankins, you're saying? I think Hankins, right? Car?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Brookfield?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Hankins?
Uh, next we have, uh, one of the ladders for the pool needs replaced. Got a cost of $670 for that ladder to be split between the city and the park and wreck ball. I'd like to make a motion to approve $670 for a three-step ladder.
I'll second it.
So is that split, that's the, is that split three ways, two ways, 670 divided by, or is that?
Divided by two, that's the code.
Divided by two, so.
Is that to replace that electric lift that they take?
No, the person that made the complaint for ADA, the shallow end of the pool, the first step is up too high for her to get up on. The two-step, so we got a three-step.
Oh, okay.
Which puts the first step down lower in the water and that's.
I was hoping they had, I was hoping they had relaxed that lift, electric lift thing.
No, and that's, that's not needed unless you have someone with those disabilities.
Yeah.
She can climb up and down the ladder and she's happy if we do that.
So we three, if I've got it, okay.
I have a motion on the board for Shorey.
I'll second it.
Hankins?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Car.
Next we have, need to approve the purchase of a new flow meter for the pool pump at a cost of $360. Make that motion.
One second.
Why don't you do that, anybody? What, is that, is that something we get every year or is it something?
No, that's, that actually tells the flow in our filter house of the water that's being filtered and that's required by the Department of Public Health, it went working last year and he allows to go to this year.
Oh, okay, so, got it, alright, thanks. Do we need a second on that?
Jeff's second.
Hankins?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Brookfield?
Yes.
And Car.
Okay, next we have, citywide cleanup will be May 17th. Some of the costs have changed. Trucking charges went up from 225 to 240 per roll-off container. Last year there were six containers. Yes, excavator cost for packing more stuff in to the roll-offs is changing from 150 an hour to 185 per hour. And that would be four hours that we'll be collecting. How do we usually do that, do we approve a sum or?
Announced it, or just?
Announced it, yeah.
Whatever it was is what it, basically just, this, this is what we're gonna get charged, so.
Yeah, it was budgeted for, obviously a separate disposal geared towards this, so.
We've been doing this for, at least. Maybe more, so it is, it's nothing that we haven't done before, so it is, it's always figured in that we're gonna do.
Yeah, I understand.
You got anything else, Todd?
I worked with Ryan the other day on the budget for buildings and grounds, we've got it pretty locked down with the exception of the marina. We're still working with FEMA on flood monies. And we talked a little bit with Ed about it, there's probably gonna have to be some type of a meeting to discuss what we're gonna do with that building. FEMA hopes to have an answer back to us, I got an email Friday, next week, on if they're gonna allow, what they're gonna allow. Then we'll allow some, we don't know for sure what, but then that's gonna have to fit into our budget somewhere. But it has to be raised, because of our own flood rules, if there's damage over 50% of its value, it has to be raised or removed, so. Guys will have to be making some decisions on that.
How high is it gonna be raised?
The proposal that they come and shot and our engineers did a elevation certificate on it, it's about five feet. And that puts it a foot above the hundred-year flood and it'll be on tiers, so there won't be any cost faces, it'll be open under there. Jeff had some concerns about ADA and accessibility, I don't, I don't think that's involved in that application, but those will have to be addressed when, when, if that's raised.
I just meant if it was a cost, you know, community.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't, I haven't seen that application, they did it themselves, we usually just see the end result.
When will you do that from FEMA?
There, he, I give him the final information, unless they come up with other questions, he's hoping to let us know by next week sometime. They've been working on it since people are away.
Alright, that's it?
That's it for buildings and grounds.
Thank you, thanks Gene. Lisa has done.
Uh, yeah, I'd like to make the proven, approved appointment of part-time police officer Tom Danoff.
Hankins?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Brookfield?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Car.
Yes.
Is Dan here? I create the raise you're running ahead and repeat after me, I can state your name.
Hi, Tom Danoff.
Have been appointed?
Have been appointed.
To the office of part-time officer?
To the office of part-time officer.
City Henry?
City Henry.
County Marshal?
County Marshal.
I do solemnly swear or affirm?
I do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois?
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
That I will faithfully discharge?
That I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office?
The duties of the office.
Of the part-time officer?
Of the part-time officer.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
And Tom? Do you feel like Tom, Tom?
Tom's here.
Okay, I'm gonna go for it. And then before you begin on the schedule, you're going to start doing the citywide cleanup, the tax papers for me?
Yep.
Next thing on my agenda would be the, approve the order 1668, amending chapter 14, section 14-4 on golf cart permits. What this does is it's putting from May 1st to May 1st, everybody's due from May 1st, there's no, it's not December, from December, everybody's gonna be on the same rotation and we're gonna have this in this week's paper.
Yeah, just coming out of the company.
Hankins?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Brookfield?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Car.
Yes.
And that's all I've got, just updated the chief.
Start with, we've updated the departmental policies completed, the officers will be issued a copy of it and also we'll have a copy down here on file at City Hall, so all the, all the policies have been re-updated and I think can make it a little bit clearer to the officers what we expect. Golf cart registration, we have already started, I think we've done five already, last year I think they did 50. So we're starting to do that. You do have to bring your golf carts down, if there's a problem and you need us to come to your house, we come to your house to, you know, if there's something going on. We had a rash of burglaries over the last month, members' businesses hit. We're still working on it, we do have a few leads, we're just asking the general public if they hear anything, to get a hold of us. We are offering a $100 reward for information. Unfortunately, this is a, because of the economy and all, it's something that we have to look at, is there gonna be more? I'm sure there will, but the only thing we can do is try to prevent it and that's what we're doing, so. We have an ongoing investigation into a house fire, I can't say very much about it, other than the fact that we're involved with the fire department and the state fire marshal, so it's still an open investigation at this time. Citywide cleanup, we've already started a little bit, a lot of people have already taken the initiative to start on their own and we appreciate that. Reminder would be the May 17th drop-off at where the dumpster is at, fireworks, and it's a good way to get rid of some stuff. If people have questions, basically how we're gonna do this, go start at north end, go door to door. I'll either leave a note on the door or try to contact it via phone, or send them a letter and tell them what we expect and they can call us and I'll come back and revisit with them. We will give them time to clean up, you know, just like everybody else, so we're just asking them to work with us if they could. Squat car beds, we're not opening them tonight because we have a problem with the title that is gonna be interesting, so that's all I can say. We're trying to work it out, but basically what happened is years ago when they bought this car, the title wasn't, they didn't do anything with the title, it's an open title, so we had to wait, we've got paperwork in the state right now, Gene and I have been working on it, we've talked to a lot of people and it's not unusual, you know, it happens, so we just got back up and tried to start over, so we gotta do. So basically the car is not registered to anybody. So in a way we violated the law, but we did, so that happens, so. Other than that, you know, we're just, like I said, getting ready for the cleanup and that's basically it.
Thanks, yeah, I did get a few calls on the citywide cleanup, people, actually be driving on these carts to see it, it's looking better. We're, again, we're, you know, doing it in a very nice and respectful way, but again, the code cleanup, it all helps everybody's property values, it's important, but again, we are getting feedback that they're starting to see it, so again, we can all help, if anybody needs help?
Yeah, we'd be glad to.
We'll help, if they've got anything, you know, it's heavy, they can't move it, volunteers will come help you out, so it's not a problem.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Streets and lights?
I'd like to make a motion to approve temporary closing of College Street from Route 29 to parking lot entrance for a regional softball tournament the week of May 19th.
Carls?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Brookfield?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Hankins?
Also like to make a motion to approve street sweeping expense of no more than $3,000. We did this last year for the Fort July parade route, we'd like to do it again.
Before the 4th of July?
Yeah, before the 4th of July and then we'd possibly do it again before the 4th.
Could we other routes, do it down, down, highway?
It seemed to work pretty good.
What do we use for that, what, do we use specific equipment for that, or what is it?
We rent a street sweeper.
Okay, so, and how much is it for, like, that $3,000 or less, is that for incident or for usage or?
Well, we, we did it last year with an air sweeper from Brentston and this year we're gonna try a room sweeper from rural Henry. And it's just an hourly basis and we do our main travel roads and we're trying to get a handle on what it's gonna cost to sweep the town and then come up with a program to keep them clean and keep the sumps open and.
Yeah, that's kind of.
It's not cheap, we used to have sweepers ourselves and they're just such a maintenance problem and, and, but that should go a couple days.
So just?
The dirtier it is, the longer it takes, so if we keep ahead of it and periodically do it.
Yeah, it'd be nice if we could do it, like you said, figure out the cost to save, but just understanding for this, this for the 4th of July and if?
No, well, it's, we'll do the 4th of July parade now, so it's not as heavy to do.
Oh, okay, I see.
Like this, middle of June, because then it'll take longer, so there's a lot of sand and salt from winter gravel and stuff and leaves left over from the early winter, just a good start.
I'll second it.
Hankins?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Brookfield?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Car.
Yes.
Okay, you know, we've always had a continuous drought and storm drainage, so I would like to approve an expense of up to $4,000 to approve sump and storm drainage expense for the. Go around and try to clean out the storm drains with a sump and, what, what kind of machine is it?
It's a tractor truck, we had him down today, he did three of the four or five spots we had, he did an hour addition of Richard Street, the 400 block, he was up at Harmony Circle and we went up to Marshes Street. He, if this is approved, he will be back, we get two more days out of him for that amount. We're using it again as a, as a way to find what we're gonna need to budget and do this on a scheduled basis. We're finding out how far these pipes go, if they're collapsed or plugged or, I'm keeping notes of it, Bob and I walked, we're with him today and we've got several of them open, so.
So he's already spent one day and we'll get three days total for $4,000?
Yeah, he's $150 now. And he's come from Streeter and he'll charge one way, he doesn't charge going back. He's committed to some power plant now, he won't be back till the week in Thursday, he's planning on Thursday or Friday of that week to finish that up.
What percentage of the overall, I mean, in three days, would that be, I mean, like you said, long-term for a plan, any idea, or is it?
That's what we're trying to get, after that we'll wait and tell, because he's doing the ones that were plugged from the last about the winter and stuff and then there's a long sewer main on Main Street that goes to School Street, we're gonna have him clean that, it's fairly new, but we'll try to get a handle on, until we get them clean, you know, some take longer than others, so.
Yeah.
Once they're clean, he can probably, he can give me a pretty good estimate on, you know, how much of the time we could get done. So if it's split in thirds or?
Figure out, yeah.
Every couple years.
So a long-term plan, yeah, I, thanks.
Was there a second?
No, I'll second it.
Thank you, Ed.
Car.
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Brookfield?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Hankins?
Yes. And approve the drainage projects, I'm gonna table that because I haven't heard anything from our engineers on it. And I'd like to make a motion to approve spray patching on winter potholes for up to $8,000.
Keep dolging me on this, I mean, is that something we normally do, again, like a spray patching?
Spray patching is similar to oil and chip. When they oil a chip, they usually do the whole road, whole width, full width. The spray patching is a smaller unit, a truck that'll come out and they'll do specific areas. We've got places around town where we've had several potholes break out in the roads, maybe 20, 30 feet long, 15 feet wide, something like that. Or in there, where we mark those out and they spray them and seal them once all the patch is put in. They're just, it's a Band-Aid to hold it until that road is in the program to oil and chip, rather than oil and chip the whole road. It's a Band-Aid to put on those spots to keep them from breaking up.
Have you defined all those, those areas?
I'm working on it, we've got, I have, I've talked to the two spray patching guys and it's, it charges, it depends on your oil and your rock, so.
Yeah.
It's based on that cost and it's anywhere from $2,600 to $3,000 a day. But I'll have them all marked out, if it's less than that, it'll be less than that or we won't be able to afford it.
It's a needed expense.
Yeah, it's been, I understand, especially with the snowfall and everything, it's been.
We did get an additional $11,000 some odd dollars from Governor Quinn for MFT. This will not be in the MFT, if we put this in the MFT, we have to have our engineers draw up the paperwork and then they'll get a certain percentage of it, so we're doing this on our own, so that that $1,000 or whatever that we pay engineers will go toward the road.
Right, alright, so.
I'll second that.
Hankins?
Yes.
Shorey?
Yes.
Brookfield?
Yes.
Carls?
Yes.
Car.
Yes.
Boy, it seems like I spent a lot of money on that.
Well, I just, I just understand, yeah, it's my first time through, so.
That's okay. I'm glad you're questioning everything.
Hopefully you'll keep saying that.
I would like to make a motion to improve engineering design for track crossings on Richard Street of $1,600.
What's?
I hope you're trying to do it. Which, on Richard Street, what we're talking is, you walk toward Goodrich and it's the two crossings right at Ozinga's entrance. Their private switch is one's owned by Ozinga and Henry Fertilizer, the other one's owned by Mexichem and Emerald, I think. But they're, they're in the process now, they're doing the main line on, from Henry North and they're also doing those switches. We've got a problem with those crossings, those crossings are lower than the road. I've asked them a couple of years ago to look into that, it's actually their expense. We have been working on those roads since we inherited them on the Exation, to build them up to plaster roads, which are for heavier trucks and we just looked at the county about getting grants and stuff. Well, that's pretty much, I guess, on hold for right now because of the sale of some of their other property, but in order for us to tell them where we want that crossing, we need an engineered cross section, so that they can show how much lower they are than the road right now and where we want them, where our engineers suggest to put them for future. Once we get them up high enough and we put the surplus material into them, over the years, we can mill that out then and keep them, keep them the same level, Dean was concerned, if they raise them and then we raise the road, we'll be right back to the same situation, but once you get it high enough, and they do that, it's a common practice, they'll mill at the track, so that it always stays the same height.
So is this, this is just for the design of it, not just?
We'll have drawings, we'll have drawings for each one separately, we can give to these companies and tell them this is what we would prefer for the crossing fee.
And then the companies be responsible for the expense on those?
According to our county engineer, it is their expense. Again, we inherited that, we'd have no easements, no right-of-ways, we couldn't find any, I talked with township and there's no records, they have it, the engineer found in the municipal code somewhere, or Delaware state code, it is the responsibility of the people who own them to maintain those crosses.
So we both were responsible for doing the study, but?
Well, if we don't do it, then they could end up not high enough, or at most they're gonna have the problem, they're pretty rough tracks.
Oh yeah, I've been on them.
We just wanted to get them up and make sure they're correct, that they're crossing our road and I get complaints all the time about how rough they are, so I figured if they're gonna fix them, we might as well get them fixed right the first time, rather than have to change them again.
Yeah, I agree, I'd just love to push the burden of the study on the numbers as well.
Right, and I, the one company said they didn't care, you know, they weren't gonna fix it, I told them, well, it was black up over the top. Which the county engineer said we could do, but.
Really?
It's actually their responsibility. We even offered at one time to help share the cost of raising them back when we were doing this grant and tried to do a class three road and stuff like that. The one is, is pretty receptive to it and probably gonna do it. The other one, we might have a little problem. But that's why we wanted to get something in writing to show them what we've learned.
Okay.
I'll second.
Hankins?
Yes.
Sure, Ryan?
Yes.
Burfield?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
All right, now this one isn't gonna cost the same thing. I'd like to make a motion to approve West Park Road closed for traffic Saturday, June 7th for the Marshall Putnam County Relay for Life.
I'll second.
Hankins?
Yes.
Sure, Ryan?
Yes.
Burfield?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Okay, then I'd like to make a motion to approve can shakers for, at the intersection of Route 29 on, for St. Jude, the project St. Jude on the 26th. And I believe they also have something up for bone milling that St. Jude.
Yeah, St. Jude, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, they got their.
Hankins?
Yes.
Sure, Ryan?
Yes.
Burfield?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Okay, and last, an update from the superintendent or have we covered it all now?
One, in fact, the buildings and grounds. We have a pre-contract that hasn't been completed yet because of the winter we had. Now, I believe there's a death in the family with the contractor. He's hoping to get in here any day and work on it and get it finished up. So that's yet to come. And on streets, trying to test about alleys. We do have our, that new alley drag. We've used it out at the Ragoon and we've got it set. We're gonna start in town and work on some of the alleys now that everything is dry and sun. The alleys were pretty rough early spring, but we're gonna see it. We're gonna drag them off first, see where it needs material. A lot of times we get people that want gravel. We put it in and neighbors complain because they're dry, just getting water. So it's, it's a catch 22. So we gotta watch what we do with adding. We're gonna, a tiller on it, a scarf our teeth. So we'll scrape them up a little bit and level them and then determine, you know, who gets gravel, who doesn't, and try to keep everybody happy.
That's it. Thanks, Bob. Thank you. So any planning, a little have updates?
I don't have any. Can I say something, Matt?
Go ahead.
This house that, on Front Street, that South Street, that had a kitchen fire. I talked with the fire chief, the Henry Fire Chief. There's a serious electrical problem in that house. The, after the fire, they wanted to remain there and try to use extension cords and stuff and keep it in operation. The fire chief did have Ameren come and disconnect the power. So they couldn't do that. And he suggested that we look at it and make a determination on that house. I think in our code, it states any city official can look at a building and determine whether or not it's unsafe. Maybe we can have an electrician come in and look at it. But they're hoping that that does not become habitable.
Isn't one of them just burnt?
No, no. On that part, they were.
It doesn't have a whole lot left on it.
So that one, I think, is already.
So do we get the, you want the building inspector?
I don't know if Steve does it, if he's got any experience of doing that or the building inspector. Although I think the fire chief can do it also.
Yeah, fire chief myself.
They'll have more pull than the fire chief especially. You know, he's the one that actually is making the noise. And I have myself some other.
Can you just report on that?
Yeah.
Thanks. Water and sewer?
All I have, we need to make a motion to approve purchase of four tires at the cost of $742 for the 2010 F-250 pickup from M&amp;B Tire.
I'll second it.
Carl?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
Burfield?
Yes.
Sure, Ryan?
Yes.
Hankins?
Yes.
Tommy, got an update on the well project?
It has gone out for bid. They've had some interesting companies call. I don't know if anybody's picked up specs. I haven't seen them this week. I talked to them last Thursday, but I believe the bid opens October or May night, okay?
On Monday, maybe May night.
Somewhere in the first week in May here at City Hall.
That's all. Thanks, Chief. Riverfront Development, one thing I wanna put on there is a meeting for Thursday. This week, we got that short week kinda got us on the same.
Thursday?
Yeah, this Thursday, yeah. I like to have the Thursday that follows the council meeting.
What time?
Seven. Right there, seven or six thirty. I'll say seven.
Seven?
Yeah. Sheriff Committee?
I've got nothing on that. Gene, did anybody stop in here this week? Stop and talk to, to big construction on Saturday? Talk to them about that program.
Nobody came in today.
No, that's all right. Nothing, nothing on barbecue committee.
Okay, Communications. Arbor Day tree planting, Central Park. Friday, April 25th at 4:00 PM. St. Jude spaghetti dinner, Saturday, April 26th at the River Valley Bowl. Pre-commission meeting, Thursday, May 1st at 7:00. River Park Center. Trivia night at the River Valley Bowl. Saturday, May 3rd at 5:30 PM. All proceeds for the Gateway Services. AMA Motorcycle Race, Sunday, May 4th. Marshall Putnam Fairgrounds, Route 29.
What time is that at?
Uh, that one, you don't have the time. Actually, the gates open at 10:00. Believe racing's at noon. You're right, dude. There are some flyers out. They went out the last couple of weeks on that race. That is a, again, it's a return of a race that used to be pretty well-known in these parts. I mean, I'm getting a lot of people, they call me at work even and say that that was the race in this area. So it was some kind of, some kind of race back in the seventies.
It was best quarter mile, half mile, or half mile track. We got a gentleman right here that could tell you all.
All right, Jerry.
Sorry to bother you, but, many Jerry, sir. First of all, I'd like to thank the employers, city board, for allowing this to come back to the Three Hundred Fairgrounds. And as, as Doug knows, there's this one problem that we seem to need to come up with some hay bales because of the winter that we've had. We're having a hard time to get that, we need 400 hay bales. So if anybody in the room got a connection for hay bales, straw, wheat, it's needed really, really bad. And with, along with Doug and I, I've got radio stations and websites all over the country that I've been putting this out to, hoping that it'll, it'll bring Henry, the community of Henry, back in the world of motorsport racing, not just flat track racing. I'm talking automobile racing, funny cars and so forth. But these are some of the emails that I've got back from dozens of, of flat track racing. And they're actually building their bikes to get them back on the track as we speak. I wanna thank a lot of the people from the town, Ed Carl's playing Zane, Joyce from Town Treasurers, Harold from H&amp;L, Stilwell. And I can go on because when it started out, the gentleman that wanted to do this didn't have the funds, come up with permit money. And with the help of all these people, today I was told that we just reached that $2,000 mark. And Doug, you put in $100 from your pocket. So the monies and the funds were raised. But unfortunately, even a promoter, Steve Ness from S&amp;R Racing, said that he never thought for any time in any part of the country that here we would run out of hay or stub because of the hard winter. It's, it's bad. So so many years, got magic nickel in your pocket to make a phone call. I know that don't work no more, you have four or more. Do what you can do because we need, we need 400 hay bales.
Just quickly, when you get back to Steve, Jerry, was, I looked quickly online. It was like haysales.com and they had 50 different kinds of straw. And they had lots of bales, so.
I'll look at it.
It was very high, well.
I, my, you run away, Mr. Stilwell. Sorry, I said that wrong, but.
How everyone say it?
These people are working and this helps come and screen for good contributions to this making work. He's willing to help us out with whatever it takes to get the hay. And I appreciate that very much. But I just wanted to say thank you to all of you.
Thank you. Again, it's just another event that, you know, that Henry can bring events. You bring people, your restaurants, everybody does well. It's just getting that, again, draw people to town. And if you got a chance, maybe to, to make this work. I think.
Dale, can we, Dale? Jeez, I'm sorry.
Yeah, he might get crotch grabbed.
What is?
Jerry, how do we get ahold of? For you if we want?
We're only, 550, 806.
8096.
Yeah.
And you did say this is open to, like, the quad and stuff is open to the public if people wanna actually?
Yeah, I, yeah, I, they actually put registration on the corner of your site, so it's open.
So it's not just for others, I mean, locals, anybody who wants to get involved, they can actually register and participate?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thank you. Thanks. Continued on. Park and Recreation Board meeting is Tuesday, May 6th at 7:00 PM, River Park Center. Chamber of, Congress, right? Chamber of Economy Board meeting, Tuesday, May 6th at 5:00 PM, River Park Center, visitor center. Henry Citizens Advisory Board meeting, Saturday, May 10th, River Park Center. The Henry Purdue Association meeting, May 14th, 6:30 PM, Purdue Museum. Henry National High School Back to Red Services, Friday, May 23rd at 8:00 AM, Henry United Methodist Church. Marshall Putnam Relay for Life is Saturday, June 7th, 4:00 PM at Henry Central Park. Another new business. Approve the prom safety messages, WRVY, WZOE. It's in your packet.
Is there any done up again?
Looked like previously was $88 per, per donation. Now it's $93. We just wanna make a, a follow motion.
I'll make a motion.
Well, are they even on the air?
One station is even on the air.
They're not even on right now or not, not a lot are even on?
Saturday on the internet, they said by the end of the week. Didn't say which week. Yeah.
It'll be kind of like for us to put it on there. It's not, you know, even making it crazy.
That, that, I don't think. If that, yeah.
I would send my.
So do we? I don't know. This week, prom safety tips is the other one on Z-98 and 1498. Is that around? Are there other? Two different ones.
I mean, as long as they're broadcasting, obviously you'd like to approve the money. I would think that.
Should we call?
It would be noncharged if there's no services.
Would you like to?
It's just somebody, one cubicle talking, just somebody ended up.
Yeah. You wanna follow up on that, Ed? Call them to see if they're?
Well, we're gonna have to do it because this weekend's prom, ain't it?
Yeah.
Prove it up to?
Make a motion to approve $100 should be prom safety message.
I'll second it.
Hankins?
Yeah.
Sure, Ryan?
Yeah.
Burfield?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
East River, huh?
Yeah, we have to.
Still a dog.
Well, it wasn't carried to counts.
Yeah, it's easy.
I don't believe we've ever been asked to donate from the East for the East. Well, I'm sorry. We did quite back in 2006.
Before the Easter, not next year?
Yeah.
Let's do that. We'll, we'll donate for next year, but let's do it before the Easter. So we finished that already, but we'll approach this again next year. Okay, approve donation to Marshall Putnam Fair, that's July 9th through 13th. And we've typically given $100. $100, yes.
I'll make a motion, we give $100.
Hankins?
Yes.
Sure, Ryan?
Yes.
Burfield?
Yes.
Carl's?
Yes.
Carl?
Yeah.
Now, this last item. I'll be honest with you, I don't get this.
We've never been asked for this.
I don't even know what it is.
Your special events?
Summer Festival t-shirts. I'm not sure what this is.
We do t-shirts every year. Well, Summer Festival does t-shirts every year. Businesses donate $25 and get the logo on the back of the shirt. I believe so, yes.
I'm not sure what the logo is.
It's just a question I wonder if I have sees.
The city's logo on the back of the summer festival shirts, don't they?
I'll leave that to you, Matt. Do we donate otherwise to that?
No.
It's vendors that just come into Central Park.
Okay.
And the vendors have to pay for the spaces.
Not that pretty much fill the park?
Yes, in a way.
Everybody parked on the highway.
That would've been that one.
Good event, huh? It's up to you, Woody. Good event? Yeah, it's a good event. It brings a lot of people to town. I'll make a motion to approve the $25 sponsorship fee. I'll second it.
Hankins?
Yes.
Sure, Ryan?
Yes.
Burfield?
Yes.
Carl's?